Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The time is now at six o'clock, so we're gonna, uh, excuse me. We're gonna now call the town of Mangonia Park Town Council Meeting of August fifth, twenty twenty-five into session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alvery.
Uh, here.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Davis Quince.
Here.
And Councilmember McConaughey.
Here.
Thank you so much. And we do have a quorum set this time. Let us stand for our invocation, please.
Father God, we just wanna thank you for bringing us together tonight. Lord God Almighty got us in our decision-making for the people. It is in the mighty name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for everything you have done for us and everything that you're going to do. We thank you in advance. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. So at this time, as we attend to the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda?
No, sir. None from staff.
So much. And with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda submitted?
So moved.
That has been moved. That we approved. Agenda has submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Proper move in the second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All saying a sign. It is carried. And if you follow along with us, either in person or online, are those items on the agenda that are annotated with an asterisk or considered for our consent agenda? At this time, we have none designated, but are there any items to be considered for the consent agenda?
None from staff.
Hearing none, we'll continue on in our agenda. Our next item is item four A. And this is a draft of the impact fee study as presented by Aaron Taylor, representing ARC Development Global LLC. And at this time, he's gonna come forward. He's gonna do a presentation for us as it relates to our fee and impact fee study.
And Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Taylor's coming forward, just to let everyone relax, this is not anything you're having to approve tonight. Mr. Taylor is looking for feedback from council, and this is in draft form.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Once again, Aaron Taylor, ARC Development Global, here to present to you today what I've been working on and to get some feedback from council. What you have before you is just a presentation that's gonna lead to, one, what the impact fees are for some people who might not know, the reason for the impact fees, why it's relevant to Mangonia Park, the methodology that was used, and the conclusion that I came to, but I really need you guys' feedback, because it is your town, and there are phasing options in the Florida statutes, which means you have a choice on how you're gonna incrementally phase your impact fees, and I need your feedback in order to move forward on that, okay? I'm going to try to move through this as quickly as possible and open it up for questions. One of the things I'd like to start off by saying is that, um, give you a little bit of background of who I am and what I do. My company's ARC Development Global. I have a background in business, finance, government financing, land development feasibility entitlements, planning and zoning and data analytics. Uh, so this puzzle is kinda right up my alley, unfortunately, um, but it is good, because it's the first time I've gotten to use every discipline that I work on in one, in one sitting. Uh, so that being said, my approach is a little bit different than most other engineers and data analytics guys. I could sit here and list out all the technicals, but most of it is just data that you guys either wouldn't understand or don't use. My goal is to give you information. There's what the data says and how you can use it for your city. So putting on my planning and zoning hat, primarily the reason, um, there are several reasons you guys haven't, uh, haven't, you need to increase your impact fees is, one, it hasn't been updated since two thousand and nine, so you guys are way behind the wheel in that regard. Uh, two, being that behind, you guys will not meet your budgets for any capital improvement projects that you guys have, because you're not billing appropriately for the impact fees that you do have. Can you hear me okay? Okay.
Just use your shout voice.
Okay. How about now? How about now? Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna close this for now unless you have questions. So, um, let me start off by talking about what the impact fees and what the Florida statutes allows and the constraints that they have that I have to operate within, and then I'm gonna talk about how it specifically rates the methodology I use for your town, okay? So, one, for those who do not know, impact fees are assessed for new developments to aid in the funding of public infrastructure and public facilities to accommodate new development. That being said, it's not this Florida statute's intent to make sure that the developer pays for everything, okay? Uh, fees are based on anticipated capital cost requirements to provide services for new developments, which is gonna bring me to the Jai-Li site that's, uh, right over here at fifty-two acres. And you must meet the following dual axis next list. This is just one of the requirements of the Florida statutes. It's related to capital needs growth and capital expenditures growth. You have to be able to prove to them that you are either in the process of growing or you're anticipating growth and be able to back that up with some data. Okay? Uh, the reasons for the fee adjustment here in Mangonia Park, we've already addressed the fact that it hasn't been updated since two thousand and nine. Capital improvement costs have increased, so any budget you guys have had over the last three years, those construction costs are way underestimated. Uh, just in the last year and a half, um, some of the costs have gone up thirty-five to forty percent, PVC pipe, concrete, um, and, um, steel. Capital improvement budget shortfalls and infrastructure improvement needs for the new development. So unlike other municipalities that have slow growth over time, Palm Beach County, Palm Beach Gardens, Lake Worth, you guys have a very unique situation in the fact that this fifty-two acre site can literally increase your population by fifty percent in one development. That is almost unheard of. Usually it's incremental, fifteen percent, twenty percent, you know, so forth, so on. There's no framework to do what I had to do here. I had to create this. So I'm gonna walk you through the methodology I used to come up to my conclusion. Uh, why this matters to the public, prolonged undercharging shifts the burden of capital improvement costs in the existing taxpayers and the, and the existing residents. And we already talked about the escalating construction costs and labor costs and amplify funding gaps for the capital improvement and public facilities projects. I'm gonna quickly kinda go through the Florida statutes. Not all of them. It's long, but the things that are specifically related to the parameters I had to use and that I'm limited to for these impact fees, okay? Your impact fees, um, must meet, actually, I already, I already covered that one. Sorry. You have limitations. An increase of the current impact fee of not more than twenty-five percent over current rate must be implemented in two equal annual increments, beginning the date in which the impact fee was adopted. So there's option one. Your first option is twenty-five percent increase, and that has to be phased over, over a period of time. An increase, second option, an increase to the current impact fee, the rate which exceeds twenty-five percent but no more than fifty percent of the current rate must be implemented in four equal installments, beginning the date increased, the increased fee was adopted. That's option number two. Now, this is where the statute kinda contradicts itself. It says, "An impact fee may not exceed fifty percent of any current impact fee rate." There's an exception to that later on. "An impact fee may not be increased more than once every four years." That is true, no matter which option you pick. "An impact fee may not be increased retroactively." You would think that's common sense, so you, you can't have a development in today and say, "Oh, well, we should've charged you this after we adopted it." You can't go back and collect those fees then. Okay? Here's where, uh, there's the exception. Local governments, which is you guys, may increase the rate above and beyond the phase limitations established in the paragraph above, but you have to provide or demonstrate excess, uh, extraordinary circumstances. So you guys have several, and I'm gonna go through those in a minute, but it's up to you guys to decide if you're picking that option. That's the only reason you would have to do that additional study, okay? That's if you wanna go above the fifty percent. Um, and if you do pick that option, there's some additional work, so there's, you have to get that, um, extenuating circumstances study, but you also have to have two public workshops to discuss that option and decide how you want to phase that, because there's no statute for that. It tells you what the limitation is for the first two. The second one is based on what you can demonstrate to state, okay? And then the last requirement for that, if you choose the other option where you wanna go above and beyond the phasing options in the statute, is that the impact fee, um, has to be approved by at least a two-thirds vote from you guys. Okay? I'm gonna go through this part quickly, because this is general methodology, but you guys have this. Uh, there's a cost recovery approach, incremental expansion approach, and plan-based approach, as mentioned. There's no real standard for your circumstance, so I mixed them. I had to, in order to get some accurate numbers. So the cost recovery approach didn't really seem accurate for this. Uh, this usually happens when you guys are already in the process of doing some sort of capital improvement project, and the developers come in that may impact that, they'll come in and do like a pro-rata share of that cost. That doesn't really apply, because nobody's developing it right now, okay? Incremental expansion approach is you guys have a developer coming in, and it is clear that, based on the impact of that site, you're gonna have to upgrade water and sewer, you're gonna have to upgrade drainage roads, whatever. That is what that one is for. And then the plan-based approach, this is where you guys get into capital improvements and master planning, uh, where you guys determine what your needs are gonna be based on that single development, and then you guys wrap your impact fee justification up in that. Excuse me. So overview of my analysis, uh, general is a lot more than this. We looked at the populous census, uh, population census data. Um, I had to use my planning background. In order to come up with some accurate numbers, you have to make a load of assumptions, right? So I basically analyzed the development trends of South Florida and tried to pick the best and highest uses that could go on the fifty-two acre site, so that I could work the numbers backwards. Came up with a system of uses that would work for the site based on those planning trends, and then figured out total construction costs, figured out total impact based on traffic impact analysis, and then figured out the water and sewer, the potable water and wastewater calculations based on that. Remember when I said the differences between data and information, and in my mind, I could give you the numbers and justify the impact fees, but ultimately, you guys have a budget you need to work for both now and in the future. If I can't tell you what your future, um, levels of service are gonna be and what your needs are gonna be for those future public facilities, how are you gonna budget for it? And then I had to work backwards and say, "Okay, based on that, here are the options of your impact fees that I'm suggesting," right? And I did a comparative analysis, so that you can see on one of the charts, unfortunately, the thing isn't working, but on one of the charts, you can see, based on which option you have, you can calculate an estimated amount of impact fees that you would get if that development was finished, based on those building permits. That gives you a budget. That helps you work backwards, okay? So, um, I determined the conceptual highest and best uses for the fifty-two acre site. I analyzed the development impact potential on various levels of service. The fifty-two acre, primarily traffic and water and sewer, because that, that's a big one. Uh, I do understand you guys don't have the capacity to, to handle that right now, and calculate the potential revenue of the, of the current impact fees versus the options that the Florida statutes allows you guys to choose from. Yes. Based on my calculation, this one site, and mind you, this is, this can go up or down a little bit, depending on what your comp plan allows when the developer comes through. Um, a minimum of one thousand and eighty residences can fit on this site. Now, this isn't residential alone. Remember, this is a mixed-use concept. So mixed uses include multifamily garden-style unit apartments, multifamily high-rise apartments, hotels, general commercial residence, restaurants, gas and convenience, financial and banks, um, restaurant free standing, restaurant drive-through, and you're required to have a certain amount of open space and drainage, um, for all developments, but especially for a site that large. Okay? I came up with an estimated, now mind, this is approximate, I estimated four hundred to four hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot for construction. Mind, two years from now, that, that's obviously, that might change, but it's higher than what it is right now, so I tried to fit somewhere in the middle, so that I can come up with a total project cost. Okay? Excuse me. I pulled some population, or I have my data analytics guy, pulled some popular, population census data from the Census Bureau, so that I could try to get a projected increase of what they expect Mangonia Park's population to be. Now, mind, this is the census. I don't know how accurate it is. I don't live here, okay? But I pulled this from, uh, the census data, and there was a thirty-seven percent increase in your population from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-three. Now, seeing that some people are transient, you might not see that direct impact on the roads all the time, because it's a very seasonal area. But when you go to, and I gave a better comparison, uh, that actually broke down the different housing types and employment, uh, between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty-three. The part that you guys should really be interested in is on the following slide. Is two thousand and twenty-three projected, once the project is finished, since I don't have a date for that, I don't know, um, that that's where the fifty, just over fifty percent increase in your population alone would come from. Now, that does not accommodate for what they call a resident equivalent. A resident equivalent in the eyes of the state and other people who do impact fee analysis, they have to calculate for employees. So out of all that development that's gonna go on that site, you have a thousand and eighty residents, but you also have all the support staff for all the uses that are gonna go there. Well, they also use your roads. They also use empty services. They also use parks. They use other services. This does not accommodate for that. This is just population residents alone, okay? We did a traffic and impact analysis to show you what the, what the gross impact would be for that conceptual site. That's thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-three trips a day, both residences and, and, um, employees, business owners for that site. That's important, because when a developer comes in, that tells him right off the cuff, "I know for a fact, I've done these developments. You have right away dedications you have to do. You have signalization. You have to do, what is that capital cost for those, those timelines, and who's gonna share it?" Uh, potable and wastewater was important, because you guys have to be able to accommodate for a development of this scope, and the potable and wastewater is a hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four gallons per day. So in your capital improvement budget for, like, say, the next five to ten years, you need to know, one, if you have that capacity, if you don't have the capacity, who's gonna help you? Show then, what is that cost gonna look like? You can't even begin that negotiation unless you know what that number is. Okay? Now, this next slide is the phasing comparison chart that I was kinda talking about. I apologize, the bottom chart came a little low, and I'll explain to you why, although the Florida statute says you cannot increase your impact fees, but every four years, why I went out to twelve. Okay? Today, if I was a billionaire and wanted to buy that site and started developing it today, it is still going to take about eight years before that project is really in the throes of getting fully developed. Because your comp plan does not accommodate for some of the newest uses that are there, so even after all this is adopted, you have certain revisions you're gonna have to do to your comp plan and your land development code to accommodate for that new development. That process takes time. Then you have to master plan it, and you have your civil engineering for the site, and you have your site, like, there's, there's a lot that goes into developing just the infrastructure for the site. So based on a realistic timeline, you start really seeing the revenue difference in year eight, okay? And that's if somebody is like ready to go on this thing like the next year or so, okay? But this gives you a budget, that if this project ever completely gets built out, depending on which plan you choose, it'll tell you in that year what, what kind of revenue you can expect based on all the permits from that project. Now, that is a sliding scale, because obviously whoever comes in and buys that is gonna build what they want, but whether they change the use, the number of square footage that can physically go on the site and the number of people that are gonna occupy that site will relatively be the same. Okay? Some people prefer line graphs. That's all the next, next pages. Um, so my proposal was this, uh, you guys haven't updated your fee since twenty, two thousand and nine, and twenty-five percent is just not acceptable. I don't even think it's an option, quite frankly, because everybody else has had an option to raise theirs at least two hundred percent since that time. Okay? So even going, um, on the low end, fifty percent, which you can do without having to do the extenuating circumstances additional study, uh, you can adopt that like this year and just, and move on. Uh, I think you guys have extenuating circumstances. I think you should, um, but in order to do that, it's a little bit more of a process, um, because you have to really justify why you wanna go a hundred percent. Nobody really does that, um, but you guys can. Um, and this, all this chart tells you is-
You said again, we can do a hundred percent?
Yeah, we, we have to justify it, though. You know, um, when you look at this plan, so I, what I did was, is I phased it. I said, "Okay, if you start now, year one, you say, 'Okay, I only wanna do fifty percent,' and you wanna keep fifty percent from now all the way through year twelve, when the project gets built or ready to be built or whatever." You can calculate exactly what your estimated fees you're gonna get in based on the year, okay? If you go fifty percent now to adopt it quickly and then go one hundred percent over the next, the next increment where you can raise fees again, I give you that calculation. And the same thing with one hundred and fifty or one hundred and one hundred. Year eight is where you really start to see the difference. That's why I highlighted it in yellow, and how much total revenue potentially you get in from those impact fees if you pull all those permits by that time. So, I'm sorry, I was moving a few minutes. I'm trying to, trying to go. Um, so I'm really here to ask the board a couple of questions, um, about their feeling on the phasing and my recommendation to go for the hundred percent this time and maybe fifty next, because you guys have some catching up to do. Um, since there's nobody right now that's looking to put shovel in the dirt, I, I, you know, you, you have some time, but not really. So I, I'd like to get your feedback on the phasing schedule. I'd like to schedule with the city manager a follow-up, maybe in a couple of weeks, to see what you guys had discussed among yourselves about which option you would like to choose. And then, once I have that, I can finalize the technical report, because that technical report will be based on your recommendation of what you guys chose. And then we have to schedule two meetings after that to prepare an oil resolution, and you have to have two hearings to vote it in.
No, that's it. Thank you very much, if you have questions. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. I'm sure there's some questions, so we're gonna turn the, uh, deas over to councilmembers to see if there's any questions or comments.
It's very thorough and a lot to absorb.
It is. But I, more, my finance hat, you know, when I look at any project, I wear all of them. My finance hat says, "The reason you guys are doing this is because you have capital expenditures and budgets you need to plan for. You don't know what you can plan for unless you know how much money you're gonna get in, and either you're gonna have a surplus or a shortfall, and if you have a shortfall, you need to know how much, so that you can start looking for alternative funding." So that was my original approach, was giving you usable information that you guys can actually do something with over the next few years.
Certainly. Okay. While the rest of the council is gathering their thoughts, let me see if we can get it started, um, with the process. Now, what determines, um, excuse me, for instance, um, let's just say that right now, we, we had, we still have our old fee structure in place.
Yes.
Uh, let's just say, for sake of conversation, we decide we're gonna go with the fifty percent option. We adopt that, uh, next month, so to speak, just for conversation purposes. Um, who falls within the new fee structure? Let's just say that there's an application already submitted to town, but no shovels have hit in the ground.
No. It has to be, once you adopt it, it has to be a permit coming in after the adoption.
Okay, after the adoption.
Yes.
Okay. All righty, so submitted part two, then they follow them to the old fees. Okay. All righty, and then we go from the one hundred to, you're proposing the one hundred percent.
I would, considering how far you guys have been behind, yes.
Okay. All righty. And what would be the timeframe if we were to say, "Okay, yeah, great, let's look at the one hundred percent," uh, not to try and make up for lost revenue and so forth, but because that would be the thing advised. Uh, what would be the, uh, timeframe for, if we would, now, because you stated there's additional, uh, studies that have to be done, or?
Yeah, I mean, you just have to really justify, because it's not just you guys. You vote on it, but ultimately, the state also looks at it, too, and they wanna see that you've really done some due diligence to say that, yes, we indeed can justify why we're going up a hundred percent above it, because that's double what the state limitation is. So it has been, it's been done before, but, um, they just want more data, basically.
Just require a state review, if you need to do the hundred percent, but if you do the fifty percent, that's, that can be adopted.
That's, that's well within the Florida statute. You can do that, like I said, in the next two months, three months, yeah.
Okay. All righty.
Now, remember, you have another chance, so in four years, because it's gonna take that long for somebody to start pulling, building permits on a site that large anyway. You have, you, you have a chance to come back at that again and do it, but we saw to do the same needs analysis that they want, if you wanna do the hundred percent later.
So just before I do, Vice Mayor, let me finish up this one here. So let's just say that the council did, um, decided, let, let's begin to have the increases, so let's go with the fifty percent. We would not be able to do another, uh, rate increase until-
Four years, yes, from the day it's adopted.
Okay.
Clarification, I wanted to, I wanna, because if we did a rate increase now-
Pull that down.
If we did a rate increase now for the fifty percent increase.
Yes, ma'am.
We would have to wait four years before we could move it up?
Yes, so under the fifty percent increase, you're allowed to increase it incrementally. That's basically twelve and a half percent a year. You can't do it all at once.
After fifty percent?
No, no, if you, if you say, "We're gonna adopt a fifty percent increase right now," from the day you adopt that, next year, you can do twelve and a half, like-
Okay.
Your, your first increment is twelve and a half percent, twelve and a half percent, twelve and a half, for four years, and then after that fourth year, you can do, you can basically come back and increase your impact fees again, either fifty percent or a hundred percent or thirty percent, you know? But each time, we kinda have to go through this process to justify why you're asking for that particular increase.
Well, we do have to justify it each time, either.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm still getting them.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Because, because this was new to us. We need to hear it loud and clear.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
I like-
I'm sorry, just before, any other questions?
Not right now, but I'll let her go.
I'm sorry. Just wanna thank you for doing your due diligence. You've done your homework. Uh, thank you so much. I would like to know, um, when can we get these workshops going? That way, we can get a better understanding and anything that we need to know that you can put on the table more, that we can ask more questions, because I wrote down a lot of notes. But, um, I'm ready to get the workshop going, because I've been waiting on that project for many years.
Um, I, whenever, um, I, I know this is a council meeting. I was informed. I thought I had the opportunity to do that, but what I would ask is, if you guys have questions, to email them all to the town manager, so I can get them all in one comprehensive, like, say, in two weeks or something, a week, in one comprehensive list. I can address all those, and when I come to the workshop, I can address those questions, bring more information, and then, you know, we can have some, some open dialogue.
Okay, great.
Is that okay?
Thank you.
All righty, so let's go to the hundred percent, if we were to consider that. The recommendation coming from, uh, contracted company is, does a hundred percent? So if we were to do the hundred percent, again, just for clarity, uh, we were looking from this point to now, the turnaround time for whatever additional work would have to be done, you would anticipate would be?
I'd say at least sixty days.
Sixty days.
At least sixty days, yeah.
And much like, um, with the fifty percent, it doesn't matter the percentage. You can only increase it a percentage per year.
Correct. So basically, what you're doing is you're almost proposing your own phasing schedule at that point, but if you're gonna do a hundred, I would stick with a similar incremental schedule where you do like twenty-five percent a year, which is what I have in the, in that chart for the hundred.
Okay, just here.
Yeah. But come that fourth year, after, after that time is done, you, you probably can't go back to that again, so you'd probably have to stay below the fifty percent the next time around.
But the hundred percent, as you stated earlier, would require some state, some state review.
Yeah.
And that's all encompassed within the sixty days? And that's anticipated?
No, 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 no. So what happens is, what happens is, we, we justify everything. We do the data analysis. We look at it. We give a conclusion. We give you a technical report. You guys still vote on it within here. That is more like a, a backup that we have to provide to the state, and then every year, when you guys do your, your, your annual budget to give to them, that goes with it. So they review it. It's not like they say yes or no to some extent, um, but if you do it more than once, somebody kinda comes in and, and checks it, you know what I mean?
Okay. So from the point of time, so from right, from today, um, you would anticipate that, in terms of just having it before us for adoption, would be sixty days, or it's gonna be?
No, 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 no. The four, if we're doing a hundred percent, if you guys say together collectively, "Yes, we wanna go for that," I need sixty days to, to, to do more deeper analysis to justify that we have two workshops. Then you can adopt it after the two workshops.
Additional questions or comments? If there's none from the deas, let's see if the administration has any questions or comments. All righty, uh, so now, what's, um, as you stated, what he's- Alrighty, uh, so now what's, um, as he stated, what he's looking for here is some, some direction. Of course, we have to, as a body, decide whether we're gonna go with the fifty percent option or the hundred percent option. There's additional questions or comments we have at this time to make that determination so we can give him clear guidance. Uh, feel free, uh, this is the time to share that. We need to hear from you.
Sir, just to be clear, uh, today's not a decision day.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, just to give you some.
Yeah, yeah, just if, if you could in the next week or so, let me know.
Email, we'll email the questions.
Because just looking through it, I. It, it's never a situation where you, well, we've, we've lost revenue for so long, let's try and make up for it. It's always about what is the right thing to do going forward in terms of number one. Um, budget, you look at the impact, and this is what this is all about, the impact, uh, to services. Um, as you stated earlier, we have to, you know, the town has to pay for those roads and, and, and infrastructure and various, and other things, and. So those are the things we look at as opposed to making up. We're looking at going forward. What do we do to ensure that we have the funds necessary to, to make those, uh, improvements when necessary? With that being said, um. Ooh, there's a lot to consider. I mean, there's, there's the here and now and the what ifs. Because, and for, and for me, um, and this isn't directed at anything or anybody, it's just, uh, we're discussing. Uh, for me, it, I, I, I look at that if we're looking at sixty days, and, and I know you have to do your due diligence and do, you know, the legwork that you have to do. But let's just say, for instance, that, um, the total turnaround time to have it back before us with the state review and everything else, um, is a hundred and twenty days, so four months. What will, could something have happened between then and now where we've actually lost and now we have the old fees as opposed to fifty percent, so?
That's a legitimate question.
Yeah, it's always, uh, you know, what do you do, you know, without, you know, without having the ability to see the future, you know, which we don't have, so. Okay, um, any other questions or comments?
I'm, I am very thankful for the work that has been done on this and your projections.
Thank you.
On one of your scales, though, I did notice a, a radar that is not visible on our copy.
Which one?
It may be because, um, the difference between color and black and white. On the impact fee phasing. This, okay, this page, I see a fifty, see there's four raiders on that page?
Yeah, so basically this is if you chose a fifty percent. And in four years, if you wanted to choose fifty percent. What you should be doing there? So if you do fifty percent. And then that's what, that's what that is. Fifty percent now, a hundred percent.
A little bit thinner. I guess, I guess because I was looking at the graph, um, the line graph.
And Mr. Tell, if you would, uh, just, uh, for the benefit of those who, uh, did not hear, just to kind of give a recap of the conversation here, so they'll know that, uh, the question she was asking. She just wanted some clarification on the schedule.
Oh, um, I don't know what page it's on, but on one of the pages in the presentation, there is a, there are two graphic scales. One is a bar chart. And one is a line chart that will incrementally show over time, if that project is finished and all the permits are pulled at any given year. You know how much revenue you can generally anticipate based on all those permits on that use, on that, um, project being developed. So depending on which option you choose, I wanted you guys to be informed to say, okay, if we choose this option and this project does get built eight years from now and we're pulled all our permits eight years. This is what we should expect to get based on that choice. If you pick another option, in eight years, you know what that choice is. That's how you can forecast expected revenue for your capital improvements for that time.
Okay, now I understand the difference because there's a line, the yellow line that we don't have on the black and white.
Yeah.
That makes a difference. I understand that now, okay. Well, I don't really want to look at that because it's only fifty percent, fifty percent. We gotta go beyond that.
Why that's important, though, if you look at the bar chart, you'll see that whether you pick the fifty percent or the hundred percent, you don't really see a big difference until year seven. So the time, the time that you guys have to choose is like he said, do you guys want to just get something adopted right now? And revisit that? Or do you want to take the time to do it now, possibly lose an opportunity on a development? And, but you have, you know, the ability to increase.
Necessary steps in place.
Yeah, so it's, I just wanted to give you guys the option. That's why I'm here today, so you guys can discuss it among yourselves.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Time is now.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Tell?
No, thank you.
Okay, anything from the administration?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alrighty, so we, um, have our task before, so, and then just examine the document that we have and the possible options and get that information to Ken. And then he'll get with Mr. Tell and we'll have, uh, the necessary actions taken place at that point in time.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think so. We appreciate all that you're doing. So we appreciate it.
It's a lot, but thank you.
Okay, well, thanks so much. Alrighty, a lot to consider. Uh, so at this time, we gotta move on in our agenda. Our next item is, uh, item five, if you're following along. This is Palm Beach County League of Cities. Amity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick, uh, update for your calendaring. The next League of Cities meeting is August twenty-seventh at eleven-thirty. That's going to be out in Royal Palm Beach this month at the Royal Palm Beach Cultural Center. The address is one fifty-one Civic Center Way. The presentation, the title hasn't been, uh, provided yet, but the presenter will be Lynelda Gaskins. She's the, uh, president of the Palm Beach County Municipal Clerks Association, so. I would expect it is, uh, going to be a clerk-related, uh, perhaps even election-related topic, but I'll bring that back to your next meeting. I expect it'll be released by then. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Amity? If not, then our next item is item six A. This is resolution number two oh two five dash zero seven, seven, excuse me. Establishing the Senior Property Enhancement Grant Program for Assistance with Improvements to Residential Properties. We're gonna start with Ken and then Amity.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, this is simply what you've been asking for. And, uh, back in May, we had a workshop where council gave staff the direction to come back with this. I believe the attorney, maybe two meetings ago, she brought back to you what the program could look like. This resolution will really kick it off. And, you know, as we need to tweak anything in the program itself, we can do that, but this resolution just solidifies council's desire to do this. And with the passing of the budget, this could be, become effective October first. But the resolution is here just to, uh, get it started.
Thank you so much. Amity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly right. Uh, the feedback that you provided at the workshop that I showed up for, uh, back in May, uh, is reflected in the program, so this resolution, I'll read it by title. Uh, your pleasure, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, it essentially establishes the program and, um, the program itself reflects what you directed, uh, staff to bring back to you. So with that, I'll read the resolution title. It's resolution number twenty, twenty-five dash zero seven, Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Magonia Park. Establishing the Senior Property Enhancement Grant Program for Assistance with Improvements to Residential Properties Within Town Limits. Designating Guidelines and Procedures for the Program and Providing an Effective Date. So with that, I'll answer any questions, uh, that you have.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, we've heard it read by title, uh, and that's one of the topics. If there's any comments or questions from council, we'll take those and then we'll go to the floor.
I'd just like to ask a question. Um, I believe you guys have sixty-five for seniors. That's really old. We got to go back to the young seniors, the fifty-five. Can we change that number to fifty-five and not have sixty-five for the, considering the seniors are sixty-two? Or sixty-five is kind of up there. We need to, get the young seniors fifty-five and up? If you guys agree to that, we need to change that number from.
I'll, I'll jump in because I, I knew when I sort of brought this up, uh, there was a, a sort of an original intent. Uh, that was, um, although we know that the definition now is fifty-five and up, you know, I'll be there shortly. Guys missed that, thank you. Right, uh, but the real intent was generally at sixty-five, uh, you know, and of course, there's some outliers, things sort of change. But at sixty-five, that's really when you get into the, um, that age where you can start seeing widows and those who are, who are, simply cannot do anything. So the full intent was not to have it at a point where persons who had the ability to, to do some things around their property, it was for those who could not. Now, I, I, I would have no issue at fifty, at least just for me, my one vote at fifty-five, providing that the person is disabled. Uh, cause keep in mind, this is not, um, what we're trying to find dollars to rehab everyone's house. It is for those who, uh, who simply cannot, they're too aged and disabled to do that.
I think it shouldn't just be for the disabled because there are a lot of seniors that work very hard. I, for one, started working at fourteen and haven't stopped. It's some seniors that can't afford to fix their properties up. They can't afford to paint because they're on a fixed income. And some of them are either on a fixed income because of age or retirement or whatever, illness, whatever the case may be. It's seniors that I don't think should wait. That person is sixty-five. They can't really even, some of them can't even enjoy the property at that time. Because some of them, the ailments have put them in a wheelchair or made them handicapped, something that's happened in their life. So I do believe we should try at least sixty-two so they, they can at least have a quality of life and enjoy their property because now we fixed it up. We painted and we put the grass down and they're able to come home and thank God for this beautiful home and not so aged out that they can't do anything. That's just my opinion. And it's a fact.
Well, certainly. In fact, it's valid, it's sort of confirmed what I was saying earlier. Right, there, you know, when you get to a certain point and so forth. Uh, but again, uh, just whatever this, the body decides, uh, that was the information we had given in terms of, uh. Uh, how we were looking to, uh, begin the program, because this is just a start. And how we finish is always makes the difference, but how we begin is keep in mind, too, that there's a limited dollars and there is criteria. Uh, that, um, anyone would have to make an application and meet certain criteria in order for, um, the town to disperse funds to have anything done at the property, so. Uh, and again, if one of those criterion is going to be fifty-five, um, again, just in my experience, fifty-five-year-olds, uh, unless there's some disability, are still working. And, and do you want to have them in the same consideration pot as someone who's sixty-five and, and simply cannot work? And that was just my thought, so, um, just whatever council thought, uh, is.
So we can't vote, we can vote on the age. How do you guys want to stay at sixty-five? Because I think at least sixty-two, if we can't do fifty-five.
As a council member, you can, you can bring up any, um, modifications or suggestions, recommendations you want, and, and then if the majority of the body decides on that amendment?
Absolutely.
Are you, you know, you make an amendment to what we're, to draft and to what we're looking to do?
I'd like to make an amendment that we change that age from sixty-five. I said fifty-five, and you said most people are still working, some are not. So what do you guys think? Fifty-five or sixty-two? What would be best?
I'm in favor of sixty-two.
Okay.
Because I know that generally by that time, most have stopped and some, even at sixty. And I was thinking myself, sixty would be the most appropriate age for, but definitely, um, no older than sixty-two. We should look at.
Okay. Alrighty, McConnell?
Well, I don't, I don't, uh. I mean, it's gonna have to be some criteria, criteria in there, you know, because, um. Everybody's, everybody wants to fix their house up. So. And then the mayor said limited funds. So. You know, we're, we're gonna have to come up with some criteria that, that whoever, whoever it is, whatever resident it is, meets all that.
I think we did.
Before, you know, money's dispersed.
Anything else? Okay. And also keep in mind, too, and this is just information, not to sway one way or the other, keep in mind, too, that if you're talking, going to sixty-two, you're talking individuals who retirement age is sixty-seven, sixty-nine, and so it's not sixty-two anymore. Uh, the age for retirement has actually increased, so those individuals will still be working if they want their full, uh, social security retirement, if it's still around. So just, just something for consideration.
Yeah, that's why we really need to do it because social security may not be around.
Okay, and, and again, my, okay, so we've heard, and just for me, I'm still at sixty-five, uh, but of course, again, whatever this body decides as a majority is, is what we will endeavor to do.
Okay.
Do you want to make a recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend that we, um, keep it at six, we'll change it from sixty-five to sixty-two.
Okay, so motion has been made to make an amendment to the, um, agreement?
I'll second that one.
To take it, uh, from, let me just go to Amity for a moment.
Let me just make sure the maker of the motion, is your motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven with the modification that the age restriction be lowered to sixty-two?
That's correct.
Okay.
Also noted for the record, uh, that is indeed the motion. Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Motion on the table is to approve, um, um, the resolution, uh, with the modification being from sixty-five to sixty-two? Sixty-two?
Sixty-two, yes.
Uh, that is the motion that has been properly moved and seconded. Um, there's hearing no questions. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis Quince?
Yes.
Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Alder?
Uh, no. Okay, so it passes three to one. Okay. Alright, thanks so much, and we're gonna continue on in our agenda. If you're following along with us, let me just go back to mine. Okay, our next order of business is item seven B. And this is a request for approval to purchase two flight model NP submersible pumps. Well, I'm sorry, six B, my apologies. Resolution number two oh two five dash zero eight, and this is supporting a collaborative process for developing and creating a counter-ride transportation plan that's provided by the Village of Palm Springs. Is that Ken or?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, simply put, there, uh, over the past, it, I would say ten years anyway, there has become a need for the county and the municipalities to work closer together. When it comes to transportation needs. Uh, without getting into the details of it, you've seen municipalities in Palm Beach County suing the county, the county suing municipalities. So this is going to be a collaborative effort to cut down on some confusion, give all municipalities input into a master plan. That, uh, hopefully, uh, will benefit everyone in future years. There has been a consultant that has been hired. I don't have that name with me, but, uh, this consultant will be putting together information. And we'll be presenting it to each municipality for feedback. So this resolution is just in support of that process. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and certainly the attorney can as well.
Okay, and just before we do, we're gonna go to, uh, the attorney for resolution number two oh two five dash zero E. Amity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, it's resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Magonia Park, Florida, supporting the procurement and oversight of consultants for the development of a countywide transportation plan, supporting the formation of a technical advisory committee for the same and providing an effective date.
Thank you so much. You've heard it read by title as well as a description. Are there any questions or comments from council?
What type of transportation will this be for and who will it be for? Is it for the whole community or is it for certain people?
Yes, ma'am. I, the way that I understand this, this is going to take on all facets of transportation. Walking, riding, driving, everything. So, uh, it's at the very beginning stages of this, and I'm sure, uh, the consultant and the county will welcome our feedback. But this is, from what I understand, is designed to tackle everything transportation-wise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. We've had full discussion. If there are no other questions or comments, uh, motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, um, forward with the, supporting the collaboration process for developing the, and creating the countywide transportation plan.
Okay, thank you so much. Motion has been made to approve, uh, resolution two oh two five dash zero eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis Quince?
Yes.
Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Alder?
Uh, yes. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is item seven A. And this is consideration of approval of preliminary site plan application number. Our next order of business is item seven A, and this is consideration of approval of preliminary site plan application number SR two oh two five dash zero one at forty-eight oh five East Avenue LLC to allow the new construction of a six thousand two hundred and twelve foot square, uh, foot, square foot warehouse building within the industrial, uh, district. And, and the applicant is here. If so, we're gonna actually just come forward, Mitty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a quasi judicial hearing, could you state your name for the council?
Sure, my name is Daniel Affanador.
Thank you, could you raise your right hand for me, I'm gonna swear you in and I'll swear in anybody from staff who's gonna be speaking as well. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all, and I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much, and welcome, we appreciate you coming before us. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna turn the floor over to you, we have your application before us. And, uh, so the purpose, of course, is just for the benefit of those who are, don't have what we have in our hand. You're looking to do, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, like I said, my name is Daniel Affanador, I'm a project architect at Alexis Knight Architects, and I'm here to in presentation of Ms. Roberts. And I'm here to, um, uh, talk about the proposed development that we have, which is a new warehouse building, uh, located at forty-eight oh five East Avenue.
I'm sorry, Mr. Daniel, just before you do.
Yep.
Perhaps, uh, cause we have a presentation in front of us with the elevations, could we have the, the brought forward and face that way? And that way, when he's talking, uh, the audience can follow along as well.
And we do have one in the audience circulating.
Oh, there's one circulating as well, okay. Yeah, perhaps a chair up front? Uh, yes.
You want the audience to see it?
Uh, yes. Yeah, we have it here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. So as it's circulating, uh, they'll be able to see it prior to getting circulation, so.
All right, thank you.
My apologies, uh, go right ahead.
All right, so, uh, next page, I said, what we're gonna do is, uh, give you a chronology of what we've been doing. Uh, our goal is to get the final site approval. Um, intent is to develop a vacant lot into a warehouse building, that you can see right before you. Uh, the units will be leased and intended to house light industrial equipment and packages. And the project, of course, will aim to comply with all Mangonia's master plans and regulations. If you turn the next page where it says site existing conditions, as of right now, as you can see, the lot is vacant. Uh, it's currently used just for parking. Uh, of course, there's some landscaping around the site. Um, and, uh, a very special condition with this site is that there is no sidewalk, uh, along that side of the street. So, you know, it's just one thing to consider. Uh, if you turn the next page, uh, there's the proposed development. Back in, at the beginning of the year, we were granted some variances, I'm just going to revisit very quick what the variances were. Uh, the first variance was the, that the lot width was less than the required, which is a hundred feet. Uh, so we got a reduction, uh, granted, um, to make it a little bit over ninety feet wide. The second variance that was granted was the front building setback, uh, we requested a three foot ten, um, feet reduction. Same with the third variance was the side yard building setback, we also requested a three foot, uh, reduction. And the last, not least, was the green belt, we also requested a three feet reduction. Uh, on the north side, uh, ten feet reduction on the south and the west, and, and to request a zero feet green belt on the east because that's where we, uh, with the vehicular access is going to be. If you turn the next page, uh, it just gives you a clear, um, graphics of what variance one entails. So like I said, it's the unique condition, um, of having a reduced site. Uh, the next variance, I'm gonna go quick through these because we already went through these. Second variance, of course, uh, the minimum front building setback was, um, forty. So it got reduced to thirty-six point two. The reason we did this is because we needed to, um, maximize the space that was needed for the program, for the project. Uh, variance number three, the same thing, the unique condition was that the minimum side yard building setback is fifteen, so we requested it to be twelve. And the last variance, like I mentioned before, it was a green belt setback, uh, which was unique on all four sites. Now, the proposed element, uh, what you're gonna see is the tabular data and the project data. Uh, you'll see there's, uh, some major building divided into three blocks per se. Each one of them, I'm sorry, the whole, uh, the proposed use, of course, is warehouses and is, this falls into the industrial district of Mangonia. And each, um, the whole building square footage of this project, for the building is six thousand two hundred and twelve feet. Uh, right below there, you will see that it says, uh, square feet of, uh, total of occupable space is five thousand six hundred and sixteen. That's because we're only counting what's actually occupiable. On your next slide, you'll see the floor plans, these are just typical, uh, throughout all units. They're very simple, just an open space warehouse, and each one of them has a restroom. And you can see on first and second floor, you know, got, uh, stairs on the, in the middle, uh, to access the second floor. So those are the proposed layouts. On your next slide, where it says, uh, building design overview, the architecture of it, uh, you can see, um, what the intent is in terms of the architectural building. You can, uh, more or less see what the colors and materials are gonna look like. Uh, the intention is to make it a modern, clean look with smooth concrete walls. Have some accent bands in red for the railings and, um, having some railings and trims, um, finishing black and metal. Uh, the materials, um, are gonna be impact rated for the storefront and the windows. Roll-up doors and garage doors on the ground floor, and there'll be bollards on the first floor to control vehicular access. Some of the key features of this building would be the rooftop will have screens, and those will hide the, um, air conditioning on the, on the roof. The building itself is symmetrical, uh, between doors and storefronts. And that's pretty much it for the architecture. Uh, from, on your next slide, this is, uh, a little more on the technical side for the civil, you'll see, um, in a very summarized way, uh, the site demolition and prep will be clearing all the pavement and utilities before construction and prepping the land for new construction, that's what the site demolition erosion control plan is. And of course, only parts of the property are included in the project, uh, the re, the rest will remain unchanged. This is just a very basic civil plan. On the next slide, uh, you have what is the parking and traffic sheet or plan. Um, there you can see more clearly that there's gonna be new parking spaces, how they're going to be laid out in front of the building. Uh, the striping and signage will guide drivers clearly. And it's gonna include stop signs and arrows on site. And the parking spot is going to be ADA compliant. Your next, um... On your next slide is the paving and drainage plan. The project is going to have a modern stormwater system, which it's going to handle rain safely to prevent flooding in, on site. Uh, the pavement and concrete will be laid out for durability and clean access. The underground drainage pipes are added for efficient water flow, and the roof drainage will direct waters, um, water flow to chambers on the southwest corner of the lot. So those are, um, those symbols, those graphics that you see on your lower left and lower right corner of the plan. On your next slide, uh, the grading plan, uh, the site will be leveled and sloped properly to, uh, to control the water runoff. And this will ensure that the water drains away from the building and sidewalks. Uh, the development will be using approximately a thousand thirty-five gallons of waters per day, and the solid waste generation per year is about four point ninety-seven tons. All this was actually addressed during our last round as well. And for the landscape proposed plan, um, of course, it'll comply with local zoning and landscape code. Uh, this will include trees, palm, shrubs, and ground covers, um, to provide the minimums. And it's going to be designed to shade coverage visibility, I'm sorry, to shade coverage, visibility triangle, and irrigation guidelines. Uh, the types of trees that we're gonna be using, uh, is mainly gonna be canopy trees, oaks, and mahogany's. Uh, some palm trees just located, relocated in visual areas and some shrubs, which of course will be native and tolerant species. And, well, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before council ask, well, I just want to, I know Daniel recognized her. Uh, Ms. Roberts is here, the property owner, and she's had her business in Mangonia Park for a while. And also our planning staff, Nilsa is here, Daniel used most of her time, but she is here if you have questions for her.
Well, certainly. Okay, so what we'll do here, uh, we'll see if there's any questions for the applicant, and then we'll have our planner come forward with additional information and/or, uh, assets of questions. So if there's any questions that come in from council, we'll take those now.
How you doing, sir?
Hello.
Giving us this, this is great. What type of industrial equipment will be going inside?
This is just like, uh, med aid and light industrials in general, I mean, Ms. Roberts. Just equipment.
Oh, cause I thought he said industrial equipment. So it's a storage?
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, just a moment, um, right, uh, we'll have a Mitty, uh, swear you in if you're gonna have some...
Yeah, we need to have, if, can you come to the, uh, microphones, anybody who's gonna speak?
Oh.
Can you give the council your name, please?
Uh, Steve Knight with Alexis Knight Architects.
Thank you, raise your right hand for me, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Uh, feel free.
Stay there, sir, stay there.
It's okay to come back.
Yeah, Daniel pretty much covered it, did a great job. But as far as your question on equipment on the inside, these are open shelves uh, for storage specifically, uh, for warehouse. Tradespeople and so on and so forth will be using this square footage, there's no heavy equipment or production or manufacturing, anything like that. Just open storage.
Okay, cause I, I misunderstood you, I thought you said it was industrial equipment, so that's why I was like, what kind of store? Okay, I thank you for clarifying that. Thank you so much.
Ready, anything else, Councilmember Davis?
So my understanding is, uh, open storage, now I, I got it, I, cause I thought he said industrial equipment, and that's okay, um...
Yeah, more correctly, it's, it's warehousing, warehousing.
Okay, thank you. And everything will be stored inside, since it's that type of storage, nothing will be stored outside?
Correct.
Not yet.
Within the confines.
Okay, thank you. All right, you answered a question and I appreciate you.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor?
Okay, I'm just trying to get the intent. The intent of this is... Excuse me, my voice is a little harsh today. The intent of this project, it's for leasing and renting to business owners or is it only to be used by your own company op, uh, operations?
It'll be...
I'll just stay up there.
There'll be multiple, uh, and various tenants that occupy these spaces. Uh, Ms. Roberts may occupy some of the spaces, but the rest of them are for open lease.
Okay. Okay, that, that helps a little bit, thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me, can you, what's your name again?
Steve.
Mr. Steve, um, I'm just trying to get, understand, I can kinda read the room and see the faces of, like, people trying to get a full understanding. She's gonna occupy some of the spaces for what?
For her storage and warehousing, yes.
Okay, so she's a part of the business?
Yes, yeah, she owns the building, she is the landlord.
She's, okay.
And she's going to lease these, she may or may not occupy any of the spaces.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, just a moment.
Let me swear you in. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, raise your hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And can you give the council your name?
Marilyn Roberts.
Thank you.
How you doing, Ms. Roberts?
We need to look to the microphone. We, we do transportation.
Ms. Roberts? Okay, what's, let me come forward, okay.
Oh, boy. Presently, we have a transportation service, med aid services, and the intention is to use most or some of the spaces there to occupy as office and, or vehicles being parked, some of them parked on the outer side or even inside the warehouse, whichever can accommodate some of them.
Okay, so some of your vehicles will be parked outside?
Yes, and some will be inside.
You'll be parking inside? Okay.
Repairs, and repairs are such as if the vehicle needs any form of maintenance, we'll have a section for that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, and where might you do maintenance, um, at that building? Where, where would you do maintenance in the front?
Inside, because if we have to repair any of our vehicles.
Any maintenance would be just routine maintenance, you know, cleaning the vehicles and that type of thing, no automotive type repairs or anything.
Okay.
Presently, we are doing it on the, whatever we can, on the outer empty lot right now, so there's no coverage for us to clean our vehicles or do anything to them, basic, simple maintenance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? And we're gonna ask, uh, the three of you just stand there, cause I, I have some questions. Ready, any other questions or comments? Okay, ready? So, um, let me just kinda clarify, because, um, when, and looking at it in the presentation and looking at it previously, I was under the general assumption, under the general definition that we use for warehouses, right? Um, what I'm hearing now, I think, is that, uh, no, it's also gonna be used for business purposes, for transportation specifically, to park vehicles and do some light maintenance and such, cause that's a different use.
It's, it's warehousing.
Oh, geez.
It's, it's warehousing.
But maybe, go ahead.
Ms. Roberts may use, uh, one of the bays occasionally for her own benefit, uh, to, to store some of her, her, her products and occasionally a vehicle, but for the most part, these units are gonna be leased out to separate individuals, separate tenants. They're set up as such, both code-wise and life safety-wise, uh, there's fire separations between each of them, they can be separate tenants, and they'll be, uh, rented out to individuals who may have a trade, where maybe a plumber is going to be using that as a warehouse, or maybe an electrician, or, you know, any other tradesperson could lease one of these for their own benefit for warehousing products.
Okay, now specifically...
Excuse me.
Uh, you've gone through the DRC process and, and, yeah, cause we have all of this before us with the BOA and such. Now, on your application, when you submitted your application, what was the use, um, on your application?
Warehouse.
Warehouse, okay. So again, I go to the general definition of warehouse, and so what I'm hearing is sort of like a hybrid of that? Uh, cause if indeed there's gonna be, so, and, and, and I know that Ms. Roberts is in the transportation business, and, and we love the transportation business, and that's not the issue here. Right, but if there's gonna be ancillary uses, like a, a transportation component to it, where some transportation vehicles is gonna be stored and/or repaired there?
Well, it, no, not repaired.
Maintain, like, simple cleaning. These vehicles has got to be in immaculate condition, cause we transport children. So we really would do well with one of those bays to have it to clean our vehicles, service them maybe. them, maybe, simple repairs, anything else is outdoors, is, um, sub, to, uh, repair shop or, um, accompany that the vehicle, if we have a Ford vehicle, we most likely take them there, but we are not doing any major repair as such on that property.
Right, and again, it's not to be a, a worksmith, but, um, when you maintain a vehicle, changing brakes, changing oil, all of that is maintaining it.
No, yeah, it's a very, most, Ms. Roberts will pull into one of the larger bays, possibly one of her vehicles, to clean it up for that day's rounds, vacuum it out, wash the windows, that type of thing. Uh, her vehicles are out on, on the road all day, making runs and so on and so forth. Uh, so she may occupy, in fact, she may lease back one of these spaces to herself, who knows? She may be one of the tenants, and that'll be one or two selected bays, but the rest of the units are for warehousing, uh, to be leased by separate tenants.
Okay, so let me go back to Ms. Roberts, uh, because you had stated, and we just wanna have full understanding, uh, so that we can make a, make an educated decision here. Earlier, you stated that a vehicle or two might be parked there, something like that, right? So in the commission of your business, of course, in the transportation business, um, when they're not in use, they're parked somewhere, right? Um, is this, is this one of the places where, again, just to be clear, where some might be parked?
Maybe, we'll have some there, maybe, if it's needed, or if we extend the business or need, need more space or anywhere, but.
Okay, um, okay. All righty, Vice Mayor?
I think what the mayor is trying to clarify, uh, that you have tenants that are gonna use some of these warehouse slots, they would need to have separate parking, and it would not give leeway for your vehicles to be in the slots that are allotted for the warehouse.
We would limit what we have been using, we wouldn't take from a tenant what they need.
No, no, specifically.
There's, there's parking spaces allocated for each unit, so if Ms. Roberts occupies one or two units, she will have access to those parking stalls only for those units, leaving the balance of those for the tenants that re, uh, lease the remaining spaces.
Like, what I was heading toward, are there additional parking spaces specifically for the use of your vehicle?
No, just for the tenants that occupy the building. Balanced perfectly.
Okay, so let me be clear, of my, my intent of my questions, right, and I guess probably just to kinda say it, businesses normally do not operate out of warehouses, right? Warehouses are, are for storing things, so that's my full intent here, that's the important of my question. Will a business be operating out of there?
No.
In any fashion?
No, no business, no business. Uh, they'll be for warehousing for, uh, potential business owners, but they will not conduct business out of these. People will be not, they will not be going to this space to do business. They will not be buying products there, they will not be shopping there, it's gonna be for warehousing.
We got that, but the question, and I, not, not to belabor the point, but the question specifically for me, at least, is, as it relates to the transportation issue that is being discussed here. Ms. Roberts made, mentioned earlier that a few vehicles, and that is the reason why I was asking those questions, not, not a certain business, but a specific business, that being the transportation business.
Well, it very well could be too, for example, you've noticed that there are a number of large overhead doors. She could have a tenant that is, for example, um, a carpenter, who might warehouse some of his materials in. He could pull his work truck in there at the end of the day to vacuum it out, clean it, and so on and so forth, and then the next day, he's out on the road. So it is for warehousing.
Okay.
Not for business purposes.
Okay, uh, for the record, so that I'm clear, right, the spec, my specific question is, as it relates to the transportation business that Ms. Roberts operate?
It's just going to be.
I'll, I'll let you get right to it. Will there be any transportation business being conducted there, is my specific question?
No.
No.
Okay, so, so noted for the record.
No.
All righty, now, earlier as well, um, you had stated that, uh, when we looked at the site number, but the site existing conditions where there is no sidewalk, is the intent to have a sidewalk, I'm, was looking at the, the plan. There'll be side, will there be sidewalk there? I'm looking, it's kinda small, so.
Oh, yeah, on the existing conditions, she.
Yeah, there isn't now, but you're proposing to have a sidewalk?
No, 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 there, I mean, no.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk.
No sidewalk to connect to.
Yeah.
All righty, okay, let's see if there's some other questions or comments from council?
I just wanna make sure I have a full understanding of what is gonna be hap, um, going on at this building, because I did hear industrial equipment first, and then I had warehouse, then I had storage, and I'm really not exactly sure what's going to be happening at this building. Um, I just wish somebody could just tell me what exactly you guys are gonna be doing at this building, because I, I think you also said you were gonna store vans, and then you say you're not gonna store them, so we're just trying to get a understanding, because if the police was called and had to come out to your building because of an emergency, I mean, they don't know if they're going to storage or warehouse, or if they're going to industrial, it's just so much was said.
This is not storage, and I know one of your categories is self-storage. No one's gonna lease one of these spaces and store furniture, personal belongings, and that type of thing for convenience. It's for warehousing, it's for tradespeople, it's for professionals who need a space where they can, uh, keep their products warehoused, whether it be, uh, lumber, or piping, or light fixtures, or tools, or that type of thing. Uh, so that's, that's the long and the short of it. There'll be no businesses in here, there's no office, uh, there's no public that comes here for, uh, any type of business, that type of thing.
Okay, I'm just a moment, attorney, has something?
Yeah, just, just so the, the council is aware, just so you know, as part of the staff review process, there were iterations of their site plan that showed on the second level, the equivalent of a self-storage, and he's indicated that that is a use category that's allowed, it is not allowed in this zoning district, so the applicant was instructed to remove that from their application.
Yes.
There is no self-storage allowed, there are no individual, like, like across the street, the new building, that's our OA project, that is not permitted in this zoning district, so that was removed from every place except for one in the application, I believe the, the planner will get to a condition of approval that she's recommending. Um, but also, just as it relates to the approval for tonight, what is before you, what is in the application is strictly warehouses, so any use that shows up, should the council approve this in final site plan down the road, uh, any use that happens that is not a warehouse use, uh, could be code enforced for violation of an approved development order. So just because there's discussion about vans coming and going, you would not be approving that tonight. What you are approving tonight is strictly a warehouse use. Uh, that is what the applicant put forth in their, their application. If there is a change to that tonight, they would need to go back through the staff review process, because that is not the application before this council. The application before this council is only warehouse uses as listed in the development application and on the site plan itself, so, um, no other use would be approved, should the council approve this tonight, other than warehouse uses.
Okay, thanks so much, appreciate it. Right, and, and for me, I was sort of going down that trail, because as I'm listening and looking at this, a flex project is more probably appropriate in terms of what you're explaining. Right, are, are these, uh, full windows, uh, doors, or are these actual windows, where there's?
It's just a door.
Functioning space?
It's just one door.
The glass?
Yeah.
Okay, just.
Yeah, for just natural light.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a man door with side lights.
Okay. 'Cause it, 'cause looking at it, 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 it carries every implication that it's a flex kind of a, yeah, sort of like across the street, but, okay. All righty, uh, let's see if there's anything else for the applicants, and if not, we'll have, um, Nilsa come up? Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
No, thank you guys for coming.
Oh, no, no, we're not done.
Oh, I'm not coming up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Nilsa Zacharias, planner for the town of Mangonia Staff has reviewed this, and they use, the allowable use is warehouse. Storage, as the town attorney just mentioned, is not an allowed use in this zoning district. And, um, the table that is included on the staff report, review all the zoning criteria, and this project, because has several variances, is in compliance with code, because of the We are also including, on the last page of the staff report, page six, we are including, um, the condition of approval. That says, I wanna read it into the record, prior to final site plan approval, the applicant shall revise all documents to remove any reference to indoor storage. That was communicated very clearly to the applicant, and they did remove in some documents, and on another document is still showing the word "storage." That needs to be removed completely, because storage is not a permitted use. And just as, uh, they mentioned very clearly that this, uh, will be used for trades uses, in the past, as the mayor was mentioning, in the past, we even proposed a list, the applicant will propose a list of possible trades. You know, we don't have that. According to the applicant, it could be, uh, a carpenter, it could be, be a painter, we don't know that. In the past, the final approval included a list of potential tenants, the uses, you know, a potential tenant could occupy these spaces. But, uh, as, uh, the town attorney explained, these are, as we speak, this tonight, this is in compliance, is a warehouse. But further a row, the applicant could provide a list of specific trades that could be part of the, uh, future tenants. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, we appreciate it. Are there any additional questions or comments, uh, from council?
No, it's clear for you.
Okay, if not, we'll see if there's any comments or questions from the audience. It's, it's a, okay, hearing none, we'll close the floor to public comment, we'll come back to the dais. Okay, and again, um, as stated, and, and not, not to continue with it, we just need it all, all the clarity we can get at this point, so what we never wanna see happen is someone build a building and do something, so, you never told me, right? So we always wanna have clarity in front, so, okay. All righty, so with that, and, um, if there's no other questions or comments, anything from administrations? Okay, so as a midi stated, we do have before us an application, and this, of course, is SR number, site plan application number two oh two five dash zero one, uh, located at forty-eight oh five East Avenue LLC, and this is before us. So at this point in time, if there's no other questions or comments, um, we'll go to motion. Okay, so at this time, a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend approval of the preliminary site plan, application SR twenty twenty-five dash one from forty-eight oh five East Avenue LLC, to allow new construction for this six thousand two twelve warehouse building.
Okay, now, of course, our planner had made mo, had, uh, made a comment as it relates to, not all of the language for storage have been removed, would that be subject to that language being removed?
Yes, and that's all subject, subject to the language being brought up to code requirements.
Okay, and that being sub-storage removed? Okay, now, applicant, is there agreeable with that?
Yes, we understand that condition.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, just so the record is clear, the maker of the motion is, uh, recommending approve, motioning to approve the application with the condition as stated by, uh, the planning staff, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all righty, so a second?
Second.
Ask me if I can move in second, is there a question on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis Quince?
Yes.
Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Pressman Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
It passes the unanimous, please.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, um, just as we're going to our next item, uh, we, we've, at least for my Spanish one, I'm just stating, since we're in the sunshine, we have our, our degree of warehouses at this point, I, I'm just not agreeable to anymore. Okay, all righty, just kinda putting it out to, since we're in the public.
Okay.
All righty, all righty, so our next item is our item seven B, and this is a request for approval to purchase two flight model NP submersible pumps for Burke Oil Lift Station, not to exceed the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty cents. So at this time, our director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening. I'm here this afternoon to see if we can get these pumps over at Burke Oil. We already, already put out for them because we need them, it's kinda die straight that we get these two pumps over to that station. And actually, like, uh, mini master station, it's one station before the master station, so it takes on a heavy, heavy blow, and it could cause us some serious problems over there in that area, we don't get this taken care of.
Okay, all righty, now, have we purchased already, we're ratifying, or are we?
We, we have sent out for the purchase of them.
Okay.
We're in the process of getting them, uh, it's around two to three weeks out.
Okay, all righty, can?
I was just gonna say, we are, in essence, ratifying this, because it, we only had one pump in this particular lift station, it started going down, so we had to reach out immediately for that.
That's right.
But we did make the decision, since we were going for one, these lift stations really need two, this particular one was running off one, so we did order two.
Exactly, yes. So hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we'll have those pumps.
Okay, so, all righty, and so at this point in time, the only one is operating?
I only have one there right now. It's not good. It's not good.
All right, so let's see if there's any council comments or questions. Of course, uh, this is to ratify, uh, the purchase. A midi before we have council?
Yeah, just so the record is clear, if this is, uh, approval to ratify an emergency purchase, I think the motion needs to reflect that, and just, um, Manager Metcalf, can you get on the record that this was, in fact, it does meet the definition of an emergency pursuit to your procurement code?
Yes, yes, in fact, it does. Lift station, this close to the master lift station is starting to go down, this would very much affect, uh, life limb.
It would.
So, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I think we appreciate it. Excuse me, okay, uh, questions or comments from council?
No, I think we had a lot of discussions on this already.
Okay, all righty, we've had full discussion?
My only thing was, is I see the, uh, quotes have come in, is this the only quote that we received, or?
This is sort of soul source, uh, because it's a flight pump. Flight pumps are long-lasting pumps, I couldn't tell you how long the one that been in there. Matter of fact, we took it out, it's, it's been in there so long, we took it over to the shop, and they took it apart and looked at, they blew it on it, and they said it's got a little bit more life in it, but it's too, it's too valuable to, for us to just have that pump in there, and it's the only pump in there right now. So it's like, you know, it's limping along.
Okay, okay. Other questions or comments?
So, is, is the pump rebuildable, or is it junked?
We took it over to Palm Beach Electric Motors, and they couldn't really find anything wrong with it, it's just the, uh, lifespan on it is so dated, that it's just wearing down, they can't really do anything to it. They suggested we purchase.
Well, those, those pumps are not in a good atmosphere.
No, 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 sir, no, they're not. But they do their job, they do their job, they, when they go.
So, are we working on a borrowed pump, or?
We was using a bar, we was using a barred pump, but now we have back our old pump that's running the station right now.
Is there any, uh, what's the rest of the lift station look like? I mean?
What's a few of them out there? We have some proposals, they're, uh, upgrade fleet maintenance, uh, we looking to get some proposals to do, channel twelve, that's really dated, uh, need to be upgraded. Uh, and we have a couple manholes that, you know, they calling them lift stations, but they really not lift stations, uh, little tricky there, but, uh, we're working on getting those upgraded as well.
So if we purchase these two pumps, is that gonna give us an extra pump?
That would, that would.
So we'll have a pump? So, we'll have a pump on the shelf?
Yes, sir. Also, while we at this, we have the master station right next to it, the master station have two pumps in there, but if I lose one of those pumps, I don't have one on the shelf, so I sent out for a proposal for a backup for that master station, because we got to have two pumps at the master station.
And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if council will remember, but in your workshops, we've illustrated how we needed to get three, in the next budget, three, we're going to call those spare pumps for lift stations, so that is in your budget proposal for next year as well, in addition to what Melvin's talking about tonight.
Okay, all righty, other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing all the questions or comments? All righty, so what, of course, we have before us is the request to purchase, and as stated, this was an emergency purchase under our procurement order, so at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion as it relates to item 7B.
Mr. Mayor, is there a move that we approve to ratify the purchase of two flight, I didn't say that right, flight is that?
Mm-hmm, flight.
Mobile NP submersible pumps?
Mm-hmm.
As listed in our.
Okay, as it relates to the emergency?
Yes, ratified for the emergency causes.
Okay, all right, okay, a motion has been made that we ratify the purchase of two flight model NP submersible pumps on the emergency purchase procurement, is there a second to that?
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded, are there any questions on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis Quince?
Yes.
Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor all here.
Uh, yes.
And Pastor Nicholas, please.
Thank you so much, and thanks, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thanks so much.
I guess the other one wasn't duct tapeable anymore, so. Okay, so at this point in time, we are, if you're following along in the agenda, we're now at item eight, public comment, so the floor is now open for any public comment, any public comment. And when you come forward, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Goodne, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Town Manager, and Council Members. My name is Shaquille Brown, and I just want to say thank you so much to Mr. Metcalf for giving me this opportunity to be an intern this summer. It, I really appreciate it, and honestly, it's been an experience I will never forget. I want, I want to expressly mention the summer, this summer visit helping Ms. Sonia, I'll be honest, I wasn't sure what to expect at first, but I was shocked. Ms. Sonia is so creative with what she does, the activities she planned for the kids and the seniors were not only fun, but thought, but so thoughtful and engaging, seeing her work with the children and seniors, the joy she brought to them was, it really shocked me. It really, it, it made me realize how much impact creative and caring individuals have in the community. This internship has taught me about teamwork, thinking outside the box, and importance of community involvement. More than anything, it has shown me how satisfying it is to be a part, to be a part of, something that helps others and brings people together. Again, thank you for giving me this opportunity, I am grateful for everything I've learned along the way, and I look forward to, to continue my little help in this community in any way I can.
Thank you so much.
So shy.
Very well said, young man.
Oh, thank you.
I love the vernacular of your words, it's very well, very clear, and impressive, so thank you for being a part of Mangonia Park and your internship.
Absolutely, yes, it was our, yes, it's our pleasure, yes, our pleasure. All right, we look forward to continue things, and what we try and do, at least in Mangonia Park, is to illustrate to, you know, particularly young folk, that politics ain't all bad, it's good to be involved, and so thank you so much for volunteering to be involved, we appreciate it, but thanks.
Thank you.
All righty, okay, any other comment from the public?
Thank you, big brother.
Okay, all right, and thanks again, we appreciate it, okay. So with that, we're going to go to our reports, Ken?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, I'm going to have to compose myself, Shaq has got me a little teary-eyed there, that was outstanding, and he's very humble, by the way, he has put in some long, tough hours, moving tables and chairs, and even, I believe, even leading an art class in here a couple of weeks ago, so he's put in a lot of time, we're going to miss him, I know he's soon to be going back home, which I believe is in Alabama, okay, so we're going to miss him, and I'd like to thank his brother Sammy for forcing him to do it.
This seminar was about service, I wanted to make sure.
That was great, so, thank you, Shaq, and thank you, Sammy.
Okay.
Outside of that, I just want to thank the staff for a fantastic day on Sunday, the annual Heritage Festival and Back to School Bash was very successful, we had a great time out there, it was all, what, 118 degrees or something like that, but we had a good time, and thank you to Sherry for leading that effort, and we look forward to many, many more in the future. Mr. Mayor, outside of that, we will have a budget workshop next Tuesday, the 12th, at 6 o'clock, we wanted to have one tonight, y'all just gave us too many things to consider last week, and in between that and the festival, we're just a little bit weighed down and tired, so we're going to punt until next week, but it should be a nice discussion, so with that, I'll turn it back over.
The real truth is that state of Florida flair does not have all of their revenue.
We're still battling some revenue numbers that play into our expenditure numbers.
Yes, we want accurate numbers, certainly, okay, PBSO?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, Manager Metcalf, and all of you in your respective places, now, first of all, I want to point out proudly that that little feller over there just happens to be my nephew, so.
All righty, okay.
So I, I didn't expect anything less. So, also, I thank, thank you, Ken, Sherry, for the wonderful Heritage Festival, Ms. Sonia, Mr. Mayor, and all of you that were out there, Councilwoman Quince, and Madam Vice Mayor. I wasn't going to get up and speak tonight, but I'm just going to say this just because today is August 5th, which makes tomorrow August 6th. And with that being said, August 6th will actually mark 35 years of serving this town. Thirty-five years.
My brother's birthday.
August 6th, 1990, two weeks later, I was going to serve in Operation Desert Storm, but I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving this community, and thank you all for your support.
Looking forward to 35 more.
Well, congratulations, we appreciate it, now, keep in mind, too, that he signed up at 30, because that says tour duty 30, so he still has five to go, right, all right, and I won't even say anything about his gray beard, so, I would say diet so that the young folks still think you can chase them. And thanks, and all due seriousness, thank PBSO, whomever, yourself, and whomever's responsible for coming out on Sunday to help make it a success, we really appreciate when they come out and participate, yeah, tell them we said thanks so much.
Well, just, just a quick point, they came for the macaroni cheese.
Oh, darn right. Absolutely.
Okay, don't worry, appreciate it, okay, Amiti?
Mr. Mayor, there's nothing I could say to follow that up, so no reform.
Okay, thanks, okay, so we're here, the dais, McConnell, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman Davis?
Of course, by all means, thank everybody for stealing my thunder, I have a nice little message over here thanking Sherry and staff for a job well done on Sunday at Adder Green's Park, we truly appreciate you, you work so hard for the town, you always cooking, and girl, you just might as well just open up your own little, yeah, start serving food on weekends and Sundays, but you did, you do such a well job, I mean, you really put your heart into, every time we have an event, you put your heart into the food, I mean, you make sure everything is nice and immaculate, I just want to tell you that, we appreciate you, because I don't know anyone else that would do it, but I, we appreciate you, thank you very much. So now that I've thanked you, now I want to tell y'all what needs to be done. Right here on, I think it's called Central Property System, Mr. Metcalf kind of corrected me on that, so when you enter into by the daycare, just before the daycare, it needs to be painted and put some flowers around and make it look good, because we're going to have marquee, thank you, baby, because we're going to be, you know, have a new senior property coming up, and that would be like the main entrance, if we can get that painted in, because I ride by, and it's just so ugly, I want to get it painted sometime myself, and also on 53rd Street, the marquee on 53rd, in Australia, that one needs to be done also. Thank you, guys, and don't forget the grass on 45th and Australia, yeah, good job, Mr. Metcalf, good job to staff and council, thank you, guys, and thank you, audience for coming, and thank you Ethel, and thank you Smith. I thanked everybody, and thank you, Lisa, okay.
All righty, Vice Mayor?
All right, since she's thanked everybody, I can't top those thank yous, but I do want to say, I really appreciate the staff of Mangonia Park, especially the fact that you've had to succumb to mysterious occurrence at the community center, and it kind of threw everything off schedule for a period of time, but you were able to maneuver around it to keep everyone happy, and really capped it off with the Heritage Festival, when I came on the property, everybody was just so happy, having a good time, and getting the food, and just enjoying themselves, I was just so honored to be Vice Mayor of Mangonia Park. And the police were doing their, the firefighters were doing their display, and I missed the helicopters, I heard it while I was in my class online, I heard the helicopters going on, I said, oh, I'm missing that, but I'm glad to know that you are dedicating so much to our community, so that we could have a wonderful time of sharing our heritage, thank you.
Absolutely.
Oh, one more thing, I was reminded it's time for a new, for this quarter, prayer walk, so we're looking for Saturday or Sunday in September with the 8th or the 9th?
Somewhere on the 5th or 6th, I think, somewhere in there.
All right, so just keep your ears tuned in, we'd love to have you come and join us, we come out 6:30 in the morning, and we walk while it's still a little bit on the cooler side, but we pray as we walk through Mangonia Park, just to make sure that our Lord is looking down on us and providing that security, safety, peace, and justice.
And hope.
And hope, we're adding that prayer for hope as well. So we're looking forward to everyone, we can do it on the weekend, so no one has to worry about work, come on out and join us for our prayer walk, it's only 30-minute walk from the center of our, our little church, church circle there over to the community center, but we do have a chance to let the community know they're prayed for, they're prayed for.
All righty, anything else?
That's all for me.
Okay, oh, thanks so much, and I have nothing as well, other than a continued thanks, and thank you so much to our young intern, and we pray safe travels for you when you head back, if you want to just go get your luggage and come back, you're welcome to do that, you're more than welcome in this big little town of Mangonia Park, okay? All righty, so with that, there's nothing else, motion for adjournment?
And council is needed for photos immediately following.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay, yes.
Do I have to, I don't have to stand up, Diane Peddic?
Uh, yes, yes.
5702 L-13, I just wanted an update on the community center and the repairs.
Okay, since we're. Okay.
Mayor and council, and Ms. Diane, so they have finished with the exterior painting, and I got a report today, the interior painting was just finished late this afternoon, they're, they're having to replace flooring in there, the flooring is going to be delivered tomorrow, and between Thursday and Friday, it should be finished, so let's just stay on the safe side and say by the end of next week, it should be usable again.
For the flooring for the whole center, or just the kitchen area?
It hit the main area.
Yeah, the main area.
Oh, that's where the accident came, from the main area?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was just through the, oh, it was all the way through, see, you just don't know, you don't take that.
It was that big hole that you saw from.
The side. On the northwest side.
That's where they went in.
Oh, okay.
But they repaired that, they finished the painting, I haven't even had a chance to look at it, but apparently they did finish the painting inside today, and now they just have the flooring to do.
Hey, thank you, thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
What?
Before we close, please, Mayor, do you mind, I did mean to mention to you, if you can have those yellow poles put outside of the community center, that way no one else is able to just drive through like it's a drive-through.
That's, that's what we're saying.
Those yellow poles will kind of stop them, if you can have those put around the community center, we can vote on those, because we don't have any, and they're needed after that.
Right, let's check on the legality of it, and make sure that we're clear.
Yeah, yeah, get clear the clips and poles.
Veritable touch of society we live in now, no offense to the lawyers in the room, but people like suing, so, okay.
But they're needed, and then you don't have to worry about that anymore.
Okay, all righty, so with, okay.
I hope we won't, I saw a place where the car went right on over the, right into the building.
We're going to pray that, don't worry.
All righty, so with that, so with that, motion for adjournment officially?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilwoman Davis, seconded by McConnell, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side, it is carried, now, Ken, just before we leave, did we advertise the budget?
No.
Session?
No, sir.
We didn't advertise, okay, all righty, because if so, we would open and. Okay. All righty, so with that, everyone have a great afternoon, great evening at that point now, and have a great.